Thank you Brent Doudro, we appreciate you.
You bet.
All right, moving right along, we will open up the city council meeting and if you please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, if you'll be seated. Sadie, can I have roll call please?
Counselor Dunsmere.
Here.
Counselor Gates.
Here.
Counselor Hughes.
Here.
Counselor Littke.
Here.
Counselor Strobel.
Here.
Counselor Tenbusch.
Here.
Mayor Drinkling.
Here, thank you very much Sadie. Okay, our first guest presentation, we're gonna have Reliance Connects, Michelle Jones and Scott Crosby. Are they ready for us?
I will bring them in now and I'm also adding Matt Day.
Oh excellent, thank you, haven't seen him for quite a while, it's good to have him on here.
Hello, hello.
And how are you tonight?
Hi, hi.
It's good to have all of you.
It's nice to see all of you, nice to be with you.
Oh I know, it's been a long time.
It has. How many years you've been serving now?
Well, I'm going on my third term, this would be my fifth year.
So I mean, how many years altogether though, I wonder if Denise knows that, because I used to have like the record.
Fourteen years or?
Yeah, I think, I think you've surpassed my record now, I used to have the record for like the longest term in council of twelve years, but I think you passed me up now.
Oh you let everybody know now, now the age really sets in for me, I appreciate that. Well, thank you all for coming tonight, it's a privilege to have you here and I'm gonna let you take it away and share Reliance Connects with us.
Yeah, I think I've got a presentation here to share, so I'll try and screen share, I think Sadie's enabled that for me, right?
Yep.
Okay, and then, um, let's see, give this a try here. This is always fun, right, this part? I am going to share a screen, I think I actually want to drag this over here, just one second. Okay, so this is two, all right. See. Let's see. Switch this, how's that?
Perfect.
Is that good?
Yeah, it looks really good.
All right, cool, and then, um, two, I think before we get started, I just want to make sure everybody um, knows that I'm joined by Scott and Matt, I think Sadie, you said that before you brought us in, so, I don't know if you want us to do intros first, I think there might be a few people here who don't know us, so I'll go ahead and just start with that. My name's Michelle Jones, I'm the marketing and sales manager for Reliance Connects. Been there twenty years, so I started when I was ten, which is always my favorite joke to tell. Um, and then I'm joined by some of my esteemed leaders tonight, Scott and Matt, and I'll let them introduce themselves.
So I'm Scott and I'm our plant manager here in Estacada, and so I work with our outside plant as well as our inside plant. Really been focusing on, you know, improving our network and putting more fiber to home and I've been with the company for about eight years full-time and then off and on as a kid for ever, so.
All right.
Uh, my name's Matt Day and I also work for Reliance Connects, I work on the customer service side with engineering, marketing with Michelle, and I've, yeah, been here a long time since I was a kid also.
Um, so I just want to thank you guys for having us and making time for us in your schedule. It seems like now more than ever, the city is busy, we're busy, uh, you know, just lots going on in our town, so we wanted to meet with you, uh, just talk a little bit about historic event debriefing, uh, it's been quite the year, it seems like there's been kind of one thing after another that's graced us with its presence in our community and then also provide you with a fiber update, so we're really excited to share what we've been doing in the fiber world, um, as we continue to serve the city of Estacada and then also the greater Estacada area that we serve. So I'm gonna jump in here with this first slide. Um, this is one of our installers kind of working through COVID as I'm sure some of your city employees also had to go out into the field occasionally and so, um, you know, COVID was supposed to be a two-week lockdown, right? We all saw that stuff come up on our feeds probably this last month, you know, going into two-week lockdown, but you know, here it was, you know, a year or longer. Um, we tried to focus on the safety of our employees, of course, we had office closures, we still had to serve customers, we still had to install customers, go to their homes. Um, and as you know, uh, working with the school, we also, um, were able to put up some of those pop-up wifi areas in the community, the city hall was one of those, it's, it's still there to my knowledge, those are, are still open and free to the public. At city hall, the church and then outside the library are all free wifi areas that are there. Um, and just some data for you guys, uh, we worked closely with the school during the beginning of COVID and then again in the fall when students were at home, so they did about ninety services for students. Lots and lots and lots of speed upgrades, uh, over six hundred during this last period of time we've been through and, um, normally we apply like a little gimme to customers when we upgrade them, we, and usually it's for like higher speeds and up, kind of fiber speeds and up, but during the pandemic and even now, if you call in and you have, you know, even our slowest speed package and you need to upgrade, we're not gonna increase your price for the following three months on that promo, so we're just trying to do what we can to assist people in needing more speed at home. Um, we also were part of the Keep America Connected initiative that the FCC rolled out during COVID last year, where we agreed to not do any disconnects, not assess any late fees. There were more lenient payment arrangements for people who needed that, so again, we just tried to step in and be assistance where we could be. Um, so I think that's kind of the beginning of my part and I believe I'm gonna shift over here now to Scott and let him talk to you a little bit more about some of the the bigger events that were happening in our community.
Yeah, so thank you guys for having us and, uh, obviously this last year was quite the ride and we're not out of it yet, but, uh, you know, hopefully it gets better and so we had the big fire here recently in September and so we wanted to kind of share about our facility, what happened to us and you know, how we're moving forward, so one thing that we pride ourselves is that we bury all of our facilities, so all of our fiber is underground, all of our coppers underground. As so long as it's possible, you know, of course, we're not gonna go underground under the Clackamas River, but, uh, so the pictures that we have is, uh, on the top left is our typical pedestal, this up on Hallock Burn and, uh, you know, just proof of how important it is for us to one, be buried and then two, uh, do maintenance on our facilities and spray and make sure that we have no vegetations around our infrastructure. If we would have been aerial, we would have been much, much worse than what we are. And then the next picture in the middle is actually of our generator and our outside plant manager having to get time, but uh, that's up on Ripplebrook, so I don't think, maybe not everyone knows that we service not just Estacada and Eagle Creek, but up the Clackamas River, up on Mount Hood, uh, part of Colton, um, Borton, um, and into Sandy as well, but the Ripplebrook area just got hammered, unfortunately, the fire and all of our facilities that go from Estacada to up there were relatively unscathed, but our power was not, and so we have critical infrastructure that rely on that, uh, facilities up there. And so we had to be maintaining our generators for three months, we were without power up there. So it was a big deal for us and a big cost that we had going up there weekly maintaining generators and fuel and oil and we ended up actually having to replace that generator because it just burned out from running that long. And then the next picture is actually of, uh, up at the RV park where we did suffer a couple damages, but even though it's underground, we still have problems and, you know, it's not resistant to fire. But luckily, we were able to get most of our customers up and running as quickly as possible. And during the fire, you know, just about all of our nodes out in the field were without power and we had generators set the entire time and had two crews running the entire time servicing those generators, making sure that they're filled up. That way, if people at home did have power or had some sort of backup power, they can at least use their facility, so they could still use their phone, they could still use their internet. I know many people called us and said, "Thank you for doing that" because they could watch their cameras at home, their live feed, even though they were all evacuated. And then the other part too is, well, that's good for this slide actually.
Next slide.
Yes, please. And so I wanted to kind of show you guys, which I don't know if you've ever seen this before, but NASA has a fantastic website where you can look at day by day of an aerial footage, and so the one on the top left is pre-fire on the third. The one on the top right is, uh, you know, in the thick of it on the ninth and then the one down below is after the fire and just how much devastation. And like I said, we service up the Clackamas River and Mount Hood, so go ahead and go to the next slide please. And so that fiber that we carry has many critical infrastructure and customers up there, so we have the Job Corps, Ranger Station, PG, multiple Hydros, ODOT, obviously the ski resort, um, housing development. All these people relied on our services and we had them up the entire time, uh, even though we didn't have power. So it was a big deal, big accomplishment for us to be able to keep that stuff running. Uh, we had two small outages, uh, one of them was actually, the fiber got burned up a month after the fire and then the second one was during logging and the tree punctured our fiber. And both those were, we get back up and running in less than, uh, twelve hours. Uh, go ahead and go to the next slide please. And then of course, uh, we just recently had this storm in February. And again, because we're underground, uh, we were able to suffer pretty minor damages. We have roughly five thousand customers here in Estacada and during the storm, we had six customers.
It's okay. She figured it out.
That, uh, were without services. So, uh, pretty impressive for us and because, you know, we were prepared and again, all of our sites were without power, so we were deploying generators. But, uh, we were actually able to help some of our neighboring telcos and help them with their repairs and getting them back up and operational, so. I know our neighbors to the west over at Clear Creek, I think they had many customers that were still without service after a month, same with Comcast and. But anyways, you know, we're just very fortunate to have underground facilities. I think that's the best slide. And if anyone has questions, by all means, go ahead and interrupt me and I have no problem with that, so.
Did you say next slide?
Yes, please.
Thank you, sorry.
But yeah, so we serve obviously not just Estacada, Eagle Creek, Colton, um, Corbin, which is, you know, to the north and then Elkton, which is down by kind of Roseburg, Haynes, which is over by Baker City, um, and then Antelope, which is by nothing. And then Mesquite Nevada, but, uh, through our company, we have about a hundred employees locally here in Estacada, about sixty of them with all great family wages and benefits. And one thing that I think we're really proud of is most of, or the average tenure in our company is twelve years. So I think that's, um, speaks pretty volumine about us and what we're here to do and, and, uh, our company, but. And then we have, you know, the, the headquarters here in Estacada, um, a hundred and fifty square miles of, uh, service, but then that's actually kind of outdated, so I looked at our stat report up before the meeting and we had just shy of five thousand customers, internet customers and a lot less telephone customers today, but. Go ahead and go to the next slide please. So here's a very simple, uh, chart against us versus Sandy versus Portland. So as you can see, us and the size of the city of Portland are about the same. But our population per square miles is nothing compared to them. But yet we're still deploying fiber, we're still going out there and putting it underground and getting services to customers all over and continue to expand every day, every year. And then, you know, city of Sandy, they did their fiber inside their city limits and, you know, that was three and a half miles. And again, look at the population density versus city of Sandy versus us. Um, and we're still doing more and more fiber, so. Go ahead and go to the next slide please. So since two thousand fourteen, we've been investing a lot in Estacada and about nine million dollars, and that's mostly just in outside plant, that's in fiber, um, drops, construction, that's not including electronics and a lot of other things that are in the backend, the backseat of it. You know, we've been committed to putting fiber to the industrial park, um, the downtown Estacada, the city of Estacada, all the new subdivisions. There's a few multi-dwelling units that we don't have fiber to, but we will get those taken care of, we have plans for it. We've been doing some different tools to provide them with better internet speeds, um, that have helped, but, um, you know, fiber's the end game, so, you know, we'll get there here soon. One thing about our company and our plant that we've been doing, um, where we deploy, we have fiber, is the same thing that Direct Link and Canby has, the city of Sandy, the, um, all the major fiber players there are, and so we are gonna start offering gig with services here soon, but we're doing the same thing they are and in our fiber, um, excuse me, in our industrial park, there's no reason we can't offer any customer in there whatever fiber speed that they want. Our company has the scalability and the capability of doing anything, um, a customer wants, so it's there's not an issue with our infrastructure whatsoever. Go ahead and go to the next slideshow. So, um, you know, how are we doing this, how are we upgrading our facilities to fiber? You know, obviously we're partnered with our engineers to get these jobs cranked out as fast as possible. We've increased our staff by three times the size, uh, and we've hired a lot of contractors to help us as well. So currently, we have about four crews, construction crews that are working for our company here in Oregon and most of the time focusing in here in Estacada, so we're really trying to get all of our customers taken care of, it just comes down to time and money and most of the time, so. We're getting there, so it's, it's good. And I think, Michelle, I think that was my last slide and I'm gonna pass this off to Matt now.
Okay, so I think this is Matt, you're up.
All right, hi everyone, uh, thanks for having us, we really appreciate it. So I'm gonna talk kind of a little bit about our fiber construction and, uh, where we were and where we're at now and where we're going, so if you can see this map, this is kind of the Eagle Creek, Barton, Estacada area, and it doesn't include Ripplebrook and Mount Hood and stuff like that, Scott talked about that, but we're really here to kind of talk about our town. Uh, you know, and I know you guys are city councilors, but I'm still an Estacada resident too, so it's, even though I don't live in the city, it's important to me, but, so prior to this two thousand fourteen map, uh, what we had to do was get our fiber out to all of our hubs and all the little blue spots where it's got the blue writing on it are all the, all the, all the hubs there. And those are our, uh, trunk fibers, so we had to get those built out to just even really get a, you know, like a twelve megabit DSL to all of our customers, so that was kind of priority one. Uh, before that, we were only able to give a maximum of one megabit, uh, per house and putting those uh, distribution or those trunk cables out enabled us to go to twelve meg. Uh, back in two thousand fourteen, we had some fiber, it was, you could see in the green out, um, towards Eagle, or out in Eagle Creek, Barton area. We had the industrial park covered and part of the city of Estacada, um, but anyways, don't make such a difference with some of the multi-dwelling units, apartments and things like that. So go ahead and go to the next slide please, Michelle. So this is, this is where we're at now, um, with our fiber deployment. That today and actually, we're actually a little further ahead than this, but, uh, as you can see, we've, we've come a long ways, uh, in six years and we're continuing to go more and on the left-hand side of the screen, you can see um, some of the areas that we're focusing on this year, kind of taking a year-by-year approach. Uh, go ahead and go to the next slide, Michelle. Okay, so if you look at this map, you can see the green is where we have fiber. The yellow is what we're doing in twen- or two thousand twenty-one. And actually, we've got a big portion of the yellow already completed, we've. Yeah, we got Kern Road completed, uh, we're actually working on Deuce Road right now, part of Day Hill, um, and DuBois Creek are, um, finishing up, Dowdy Road, um, and Bonnylure are finished and we got a contract crew going up to Filbert. So we're really hammered on this and what's been important to us is kind of having a plan and we don't want it to be a twenty-year plan, we want, you know, like five years, what are we gonna do, so the yellows this year, pinks twenty twenty-two, oranges twenty twenty-three, blue is twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five is periwinkle. I don't even know if that's a real color, but anyways, so we our goal is to get everybody the availability to have fiber. You know, in the next, in the next five years and I think is certainly obtainable. Uh, this is a tentative plan, it can change, we, you know, might, we might be able to accelerate it and do it faster, but I think this is a fairly conservative plan to get everybody in Estacada Eagle Creek fiber as soon as possible. And I think that's all I have, but, uh, thank you guys again for, uh, inviting us to, uh, present.
Yeah, and I just love, um, I'm just gonna go back to this because I just think it's, you know, crazy how much we've been doing, I know, like, if you, if it's not at your house, you still feel that pain of having DSL. Um, and if you've gotten fiber, you know what a relief that is and how you don't really even have any concerns about how you get internet at your home. Um, except for maybe the speed, uh, if you have, you know, a family or doing some different things at, at home that, uh, require more internet speed, and so these next couple of slides, I get to do the fun part, um, I get to be Santa Claus kind of, so, um, what, before, before I do that though, I want to talk a little bit about some of the things that, um, that the city and the council might not be aware of that are resources for people who are low income or, uh, need extra assistance, so Lifeline is, is a federal and a state program that provides assistance for internet or telephone service, the customer gets to choose which one they want it on and if they qualify for any of these, um, items here on the left, then they're eligible to get OTAP or Lifeline assistance through the Public Utility Commission. It's a really simple form they fill out, the information gets verified, we get notified, the credit goes on their bill, plain and simple. One of the great things that the feds and the state did during COVID was they extended that to, um, people with, who are on unemployment or lost their jobs because of COVID, um, and they've continued to extend that. And one of the things that, um, I'm also proud of that we recently did was the PUC came to all the telcos and they said, "We want you guys to tell all your customers about Lifeline, we don't think people know, we know people are being, you know, have lost jobs or, or are really struggling right now because of COVID, um, can you put together some kind of, information to send out to your customers?" Well, our billing system allows us to email pretty much all of our customers at once, if, if we need to get information out to them, and so we did that for, not just for Estacada, but for all of Oregon. And the PUC actually followed up with us and said, "Well, what did you do? We want to know what you did because you guys had like more sign-ups than anybody else in the whole world, in the whole state of Oregon and we want you to send us your material because we're gonna send it out to other telcos and say, 'Please do what these guys are doing' because they were able to help, um, customers get this assistance from us." So that was pretty cool, I was pretty excited about that, um, and then and if you guys have any questions about this or, or you need more information about Lifeline, please follow up with us, I'm happy to share that, the customer service reps knows there's information on our website, a link to the application. Um, but the other thing, the FCC is doing now is rolling out an emergency broadband benefit, I don't know if you've heard about this, but this is coming down the pike and this looks really promising, um, no offense to government, but a typical federal government fashion, it's taking them a little bit of time to get this rolled out. There's been some confusion, um, so far as like what, when we can start doing this, but they're telling us that there's gonna be a discount of up to fifty dollars a month towards, uh, broadband service for eligible households. That is fantastic, like, that's really a game changer. Um, and then there's also an opportunity for us to provide either a laptop or a tablet of some kind to the customer, um, and they only have to contribute, you know, a really small amount to get an add device in their hand, so we're trying to work with some of our vendors to see what kind of, um, devices we can get in stock that we feel are, you know, a decent value and, and would really help serve people in our community, uh, that qualify for those. I mean, you've got to know, like, there were students, we found out during COVID that didn't, were doing homework on a smartphone, you know, like, if they didn't have access to their Chromebook or whatever reason, or maybe they didn't get the message about getting one. I don't know, but we did hear that there were students struggling with that and so to be able to offer maybe a laptop or a tablet, um, to a home that doesn't have one, um, would be amazing, so, um, more info on that coming soon, we're just kind of waiting for some more details from the feds on that program, but exciting, I think, to have that, uh, resource in our toolkit. All right, so just gonna wrap it up here with, um, some good news, so this is, on the left is our current tiers, twenty-five by ten, fifty by twenty-five, one hundred by fifty and we have gone to symmetrical service, um, if you've ran a speed test lately and you have one of those packages, you might have noticed that you were automatically, uh, provisioned to this higher speed now, so if you, if you haven't run a speed test, maybe go home tonight and check it out. So, um, we are not changing prices, um, and we are just offering more speed and we recognize now more than ever, right, that people need more bandwidth at home, they need more up at home, um, upload didn't used to be that important, but it's important now. And, uh, we are going symmetrical with all of our speed packages, which I want to point out is, um, not something you can do on like satellite internet, it's not really something you can do on cellular internet, it's not something you can do even on cable internet and for those of you who don't know, um, people talk a lot about Comcast, right, Comcast is cable internet, I have Comcast where I live, so I'm subscribed to their gig service. I get fantastic upload speeds, I get like five, six hundred, but my download is thirty. So, um, just to point out that, you know, you're gonna be getting up to fifty by fifty, up to a hundred by a hundred, up to three hundred by three hundred. And then also, like, that's in play now, right, Matt, everyone should be kind of turned up, I should probably have you chime in there?
Yeah, everybody is at these, uh, speeds now.
Yes. Um, and then coming soon, I think in the next few weeks, we're gonna go ahead and, and roll out the gig service here, so it's really exciting to be able to finally offer that here, and people have been kind of asking about it, like, "When are we getting gig, how come we don't have gig, everybody else around us?" How come we don't have gig? Everybody else around us has gig. So we'll be offering gig service. Um, and I'm really excited to, to be providing that for you guys, so. And that's gonna be around, um, basically it's ten dollars more than our top tier. So that's, if somebody wants to get that, it'll just be ten dollars more than what I'm currently paying now. And I think that's the end. So if you guys have any questions, we know you probably have a full agenda, um, but we're here to answer any questions you have.
Michelle, I have a quick question.
Yes, Charity.
Um, first of all, hi.
Hi, Counselor Hughes.
Um, so my question is, um, are you going to be sharing this information with the schools? Um, talking about those benefits that are gonna be rolling out. Um, maybe something in a school newsletter, so those families that need those extra benefits to get online will be able to see that.
Absolutely. Um, you know, we've really been trying hard to partner with the school district and stay close to them as things change, so. That makes a ton of sense to let them know what's happening with that. In addition, we'll also be doing, you know, our own marketing around, uh, just sending that out on social and different platforms to make sure folks know, but. That's a great idea and I'll make sure that happens.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been in, I've been in contact with Michael Ware. The operations director at the school, so um, as soon as we know something, absolutely, they'll know.
Perfect, wonderful.
I also have a question.
Yes.
Um. Matt was speaking to uh, struggling to install fiber in the multifamily dwelling units. I was wondering if that is still a struggle and what the biggest barriers you're experiencing are in getting the multifamily dwelling units um, hooked up to fiber.
It's a big struggle. So there's so much infrastructure, more in those MDUs. Than there is going to a single family residence. Um, and then also, how do you get your fiber into each unit is a big struggle. And so we have a handful of apartments here, as well as a lot of trailer parks. And I figured it'd take us at least a year to get those uh residence fiber to each unit. So it's not that we don't want to do it or that we're not going to do it. It's just the fact that we're trying to get as much of it out to as many people as possible. Um, and as quickly as possible. And those MDUs is just really challenging. And if it was a greenfield and if there's a new construction, absolutely, it'd be the first thing we'd do is put fiber in it. Uh, we're never going backwards with our technology. It's just. The infrastructure. So getting from the street to each unit is a huge challenge.
One, one thing we are doing, though, is we are deploying VDSL to these multi dwelling units. Like the apartments up by um, by the high school. Uh, and VDSL will enable us to go from like a twelve megabit by one megabit to like a fifty megabit by twenty-five. And we're working on that this year. Not only utilize the existing copper inside the building. Um, and it's, it's kind of a gap to get us to fiber, but we will be upgrading all those speeds.
Yeah, so Hillway has that and Hillway Apartments is, is VDSL now. And we have, you guys are working on some plans for some of the other locations.
Correct.
Good question, Counselor Dunsmear. Any other questions or comments for us? Great. Thank you so much. We really appreciate your time. And.
Thank you very much.
See, we'll send along this presentation for your, uh, for the council to, to have.
Hey, great. So, Michelle, if you could just quit sharing your screen, screen now.
Is it pause share? No, it's stop share. Thank you.
There you go. Thanks.
All right, well, we appreciate all of you. That was a great presentation. I, I think those were good questions and. It's good to see Reliance Connects taking off. I mean, this is a wonderful thing to have a gig. I'm excited. I'm, I'm beyond excited. Having a sign company, it makes it real easy now for downloads and to get big files and it's, it's great. So you guys are doing a great job. I appreciate you and I think all the counselors appreciate you. So thank you tonight for coming for us. We appreciate it.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we are at the First Citizen Community Group comment. Do I have anybody in the queue?
Yes, uh, it's Ken or Bennett Johnson. I'm not sure which, but I'm bringing them now.
It says Ken Johnson. Uh, Bennett, is that you?
All right, there we go. It's Ken.
There you go. Go ahead, Ken.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I just would like to take. A couple of minutes and speak about a statement that was made at the last April twelfth meeting. And I am gonna try and say this as close as I can to. The, the quote was from Counselor Dunsmear. Um, so the Downtown Estacada Commission is the group that is tasked with um, a lot of event planning. A lot of event planning that occurs downtown. Um, both, both of these candidates are stakeholders in downtown. Um, the only reason I am making the recommendation I am making is because I have personally experienced um. The comments made by one of the applicants whenever we intend to shut down a street to promote an event. And because of those comments that I have heard in the past, I would like to recommend that Taylor Gibson take the longer of the terms. And Bennett Johnson have the shorter term. So as much as we can think back, I don't think Bennett has ever met Katie Dunsmear. I know they've never had a conversation. Uh, I don't know how she could personally experience any comments without actually having a conversation with her. Maybe she looked at an email. I don't know if it wasn't, it wouldn't have been addressed to her. So all of this is hearsay. It's secondhand comments, but yet it was, it was presented as though she had it. Personally heard this stuff. I have personally experienced comments that I have heard. So. Since you don't know Bennett Johnson, you've never talked to Bennett Johnson. You know absolutely nothing about Bennett Johnson. I just thought I would help you out a little bit if there's another chance for you to make some kind of a public statement like this. That you have a little bit of background. Bennett Johnson has a master's degree in public administration. That's the course of study you take if you want to be in the public sector and you want to be an administrator. So as far as we know, the city manager doesn't have a master's degree in public administration. None of the city staff have a master's degree in public administration. We don't know of anybody who's on any of the couns- or the. The councils, the other groups that are involved with the city of Estacada that have a master's degree in public administration. I would think that kind of education and background would be helpful to the city. It was with the Chamber of Commerce. And I would think you would want to avail yourself of that if possible, but we'll go on. Uh, Bennett Johnson ran one of the largest nonprofits on the West Coast. So successful was she that other nonprofits across the United States. Would pay her to come and speak at their conferences so that they could learn from her and be as successful as she was. Bennett Johnson got jobs for thousands of disabled people. People who would come to her events at her company and they'd line up so they could. Talk to Bennett Johnson and shake her hand and brag to her about how they still had the job that she got for him. And that's not secondhand comments. I actually saw it. I actually heard these people say these things. Okay? Bennett Johnson was a mentor to at-risk youths for years. And these kids would tell me to my face, not secondhand, not hearsay. They told me to my face, if it weren't for Bennett Johnson, I would either be in jail or dead. Bennett Johnson is the highest quality human being I have ever met. She makes me a better person every day and every friend she has would say the exact same thing. She has a heart as big as all outdoors, honest to a fault. We've gotten in a lot more trouble because of her honesty than because of my dishonesty. I can tell you that. Bennett Johnson is the most intelligent person I have ever met. It's one of the best things about being married to her. It's also one of the worst. Uh, I can't think of a better partner. In, for me, in business or in life, and every time somebody takes a cheap shot at her like this, I'm just flabbergasted by it. I mean, I understand why people take cheap shots at me, okay? But for somebody to take a cheap shot at her, I'm flabbergasted by it. Uh, you could have just said, I vote X, but that wasn't good enough, see? Had to take a cheap shot. Had to do, make a disparaging comment like this without ever having talked to her, without ever having met her. You know nothing about her. You couldn't pick up the phone. Any responsible adult would have at least picked up a phone if they heard something. That supposedly somebody said and call them and say, hey, I heard X. Will you please comment on this? Didn't even do that. You're a city counselor and you go to a public forum like this and say something like this without ever, ever having talked to her. Or met her or anything. I, I'm just, I'm flabbergasted by it. I just think you should be morbidly ashamed of yourself. And that goes for Jerry Ten Bush also, because you chimed in right afterwards. And said, yep, because just what Katie said, I was gonna say that. And you've never met her, never talked to her. I just think you should be morbidly ashamed of yourselves. End of comment.
All right, thank you, Ken. All right, uh.
Uh, Mr. Mayor. I would like a moment to address the comment. Uh, with all due respect to Mr. And Mrs. Johnson. I can pull back records to one of my very first city council meetings in the year twenty nineteen. Where Bennett Johnson made a statement to the council asking us to revoke. A legally issued permit to a club for Austin Heelys. That were going to be parking up and down Broadway. And she was asking us to revoke that legally issued permit. Because she did not want parking spaces to be taken up in front of her business. And that right there.
Problem.
Was the, was the statement I was referring to. It was not secondhand. It was a matter of public record. And I apologize if I did not word that directly. If you wanted a more specific reason. That public comment during that meeting was the reason. So I want you to know that. Thank you.
Why would you not try and call her at least and say, hey, as a city counselor, I think it's responsible. A responsible act for me to call you and say, tell me what your concerns are. As far as I know, you've never even been in our place.
Hey, we thank you, Ken, for your comment. I appreciate it. I think uh, she is a wonderful person. I know her. And she's lucky to have you behind her. I can honestly tell you that. And, and you can tell it's a good uh, Mother's Day gift. The protection I saw you give her was worth every comment you just made. So I appreciate you as a person, Ken, and I appreciate Bennett. And we're gonna have to get on with this meeting, but we appreciate your statement. So thank you. All right, anybody else in the queue, Sadie?
I don't see anybody with their hand raised.
Okay, all right. So we will uh leave the Citizen Community Group comment. And we are ending the consent agenda. Have you all had a chance to read the consent agenda? Uh, so you're all well versed. Uh, does anybody want to put a motion forward, please?
I will move to approve the consent agenda.
I have a first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, first and second. Any questions before we go on? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. We will now go into department committee reports. Um, I have the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office report. You've all had a chance to read over that in your packet. So you kind of know what's going on with.
Tony, you want to bring the chief in? Say, oh, there he is. Okay.
Oh, is he here tonight? All right, great. Is he there?
Tony, you're on mute.
Tony, you there?
I, I think you got the wrong Tony. I think he's under Tony Colius on the, on the attendees. At the very bottom of the list there.
Sorry about that.
There he is. All right. Tony, how are you, sir?
Doing good. How are you guys?
Good, good, good. Well, how are things out there in your world?
Busy.
Busy. I'm sure it is. Well, do we have any uh questions for Tony? Well, we've got him on here.
I do, although it might not be a question that Tony himself can answer. Um. Back last summer, we had a listening session, um, and people had talked about uh, racial. Uh, issues with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. And we had asked the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to try to provide some sort of demographic information for the uh, reports that we receive. So far, I haven't seen any of um, any of the reports include any demographic information about uh, police issued citations. Or, um, or I'm sorry, police instigated, whatever they call it in the report here, initiated call types. Um, so I just kind of wanted to throw out there that that's still something we as a council are expecting. And we told our community that that would be.
I'll give it to you right now if you'd like. So what I can't give you, what you asked for at that meeting was. When somebody calls in a suspicious person, what race those people were.
Okay.
To determine if your community is calling in people of color, uh, we don't have the manpower to go through every call. And find out what the people in the community are calling. But I do have. Our stats for self-initiated activity, uh, we can't do it by month, but I can do it by year or so. For this year, so far in twenty twenty-one, inside the city, we have a total of one hundred and eighty-nine self-initiated stops. That's traffic and just subject stops. So those one hundred eighty-nine, one hundred seventy-two of those are traffic stops. Seventeen are subject stops. Uh, the race or perceived race or ethnicity of the people that were stopped, one Middle Easterner. Two Pacific Islanders, two American Indians, three Asian. Four black or African American, fifteen Hispanic or Latino. And one hundred sixty-two white or Caucasian. Uh, there was one hundred thirty-three of them were male and fifty-six were female.
That is fantastic. Um, do you mind just including that information in every report from here on out? Because that's awesome.
I'll see if we can get it, but remember, I, we, I give a monthly report and either by year, so it'll probably be an annual report.
Even if it's a year-to-date your report, I think that would be great. Um, we did tell the, the people of our community that we would provide that level of oversight. Um, at our level, and I think that just being able to look at those numbers accumulating over um, a month-to-month basis and seeing the year-to-date number. Here's how we're doing in twenty twenty-one so far. I think that's awesome. I would love to see something like that included on the report in the future.
All right. Thank you, Tony. Any other questions for Tony? Okay, Tony, we loved having you here tonight. I appreciate you chiming in. It's always good to see you. Um, and you have a safe night out there, huh?
All right, guys. Take care.
All right, thank you. Okay, next on our list, we have code enforcement report. And uh, who do we have doing that? Uh, okay.
Amy Legg, she's coming.
Amy, are you there?
All right, okay. Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Good, how are you all tonight?
Good, good. Well, fill us in a little bit about code enforcement.
So I'm, hopefully you guys have my report there, which kind of spoke to what we just went through. So looking forward, of course, we, um, our big focus is gonna be weeds and noxious growth. Obviously, the wildfires is still in everybody's mindset, so that's gonna be super important to stay on top of. And we team with Ant Farm a lot for residents in the city that either physically or financially. Need assistance for maintenance on their property. So Ant Farm has been awesome. And to, to help out a lot of residents with. And we also, this coming time of year, we see a lot of camping ordinance issues and RV parking issues. The sheriff's office deputies have been just indispensable in assisting with those. And they have been great about going out and checking on the portal. And that was always a huge issue, um, up until last year. And that was always a huge issue, um, up until last year. So that's been awesome to have that to work with them. So.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Amy? Uh, Joel, look.
Uh, so uh, I, I was able to speak with Amy earlier this week regarding a question I had, had had. And this is, I'm gonna take this opportunity to kind of bring it forward to the council. Um, the, one of the things I called in to get a, give me a pretty clear explanation about uh handicap parking on private property and stuff. Um, and one of the, one of the things I want to bring forward is that uh, uh, there, there was a point where. Someone had parked in a handicap spot. Um, near a business and they were, weren't gonna frequent that business, but one right next door. And the business owner came out and told them they couldn't park there. They needed to leave. And it was the only handicap spot for quite a, quite a ways. And um, well, yes, from what uh, uh, Amy had told me, they had the right to do that. Be based upon the, the situation, but my, they brought forward a con- a concern and some of the ideas that Amy had had was that. There's not as much um, handicap spa, uh, parking in the city. And that causes an issue, especially uh, this area was around the, the food carts. And then as I started looking around, I noticed that on, on Broadway, all the handicap spots are on one side of the road. And so I've been a lot more vigilant to see, especially since my, my example, my wife is a, has handicap issues. We have lots of friends in the area that have handicap issues. So it's, you know, I'm noticing it's becoming a problem. And so. I wanted to see if maybe we, as a council, can direct the DEIC as one of the, the first big things to look into. Is the handicap parking issue on, in the city. Because I'm noticing right now, it's at the top of my head, it's a bit of an issue. So especially, you know, since some half of them that we have in the city are on private property. And if, if, if they can just tell someone to leave their, not to park there, because they may not be going to that business. And that's the closest one for half a block or more. That could be an issue. So. Um, I appreciate Amy, you kind of bringing that to my attention about some of the ideas we can actually look at. And then filling me in that, because I had no idea that you, that they had power over that in a private, private lot. Versus like if they can tell someone to leave or not. So, um, and I wanted to, you know, see if you had anything else you could add to that as well.
And no, like I said, unfortunately, that, that adjoining business, that is their private parking lot. So those spots are for, you know, people to patronize their business. And like I said, my suggestion to you was to, you know, maybe reach out to um, Taylor Campy. About planning to see if possibly an ADA site would be appropriate street side for the food carts. But um, as far as code is concerned, I can't force a private party business to, to allow someone to utilize their parking spaces.
This was my pseudo way of doing that. So thank you so much for bring, for pointing me in that direction, Amy. Kudos.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Amy? We thank you, Amy, for coming forward with code enforcement. We appreciate having you and uh, keep doing a great job.
You're welcome. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, next we have committee commission and liaison reports for Parks and Rec Commission. Downtown Estacada Commission, Library Board, Arts Commission, and Planning Commission. So how are we putting that? Who are we gonna have?
I'll just bring them in one at a time, if that's okay. I've got Brent.
Great, that would be perfect. Okay, Brent, it's good to see you again.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you again, you guys, for what you're doing. I am currently the chairman of the Estacada Parks and Rec Commission. You have some great young people, present company excluded on your team. Gina Sherman, Chris Stanton, Kalika Stanton, and Stephen Sharbo. Man, they're just, they got a lot of fresh ideas and some fresh energy. So I'm excited about the future of the Parks and Rec. Uh, committee, uh, appreciate Counselor Ten Bush, um, joining us most recently to. Uh, be the counselor liaison. So let me just share a few kind of out-of-the-box ideas. I actually don't know if they're going anywhere. But uh, because I mentioned the fresh ideas, one of our commissioners talked about a um, mountain bike area. That would utilize the little triangle-shaped piece of property, which is east of the area that the high school is developing now. It's school property and I understand they look forward to selling that property. So. Um, I don't know if it's going anywhere. Um, obviously, it's a big lift because it involves somehow use of somebody else's property, namely in the schools. But I just appreciated Chris having the vision to see that piece of property utilized well. Also, another one of our commissioners, Stephen, um, is involved with Art Back. Or I should say Page, and is working on some sort of an audio tour of the murals, murals around Estacada. And this certainly isn't necessarily a park and rec. Project, but it is something that we can support. And he is in touch with the people at the Art Back and Page and the Chamber of Commerce. So it's a neat idea that he's spearheading. Another idea that we've talked about is having an inclusive park. If you do a little research on that, it's pretty cool. These parks that are. Actually all-inclusive, people in wheelchairs and handicapped can access every aspect of the park. So we've done a little bit of research in that. Um, don't know exactly where that's going down the road, but we're excited to have those ideas. Some of the plans that we did have for this past year, like everybody else got um, set back because of COVID. Um, but one of the things we're able to do was something brand new. We did a candy cane hunt. We uh, put candy canes around the different parks and did this online where. Moms and dads and kids could go around and take photos of the candy cane with the kids in front of it. And we had over 50 people participate. And uh, we gave the winners or those that participated five dollar gift cards that you'll treat. Uh, we're in the works now of trying to do something like that this spring and early summer. Uh, Kalika is spearheading that. So we'll have something to get again, people out into the parks participating in some different ways. Uh, Rob Gaskell, who's not a part of our commission, but he's the one that spearheaded concert in the parks over the years. Again, last year's didn't happen, but we're planning to do that. So we're hopeful that uh, things don't tighten down again to make that difficult. So there's gonna be a concert at Wade Creek Park on the 4th and 21st of July. August 4th and 18th and September 1st. So I appreciate Rob stepping in and make that happen. Um, so that'll be something that'll be good for our community, hopefully getting people out. Overlook Park was completed. Appreciate our city manager moving that ahead and getting all the playground equipment in there. That turned out well. Campanella Park obviously is something still in uh. As you know, the development is still being built out and the first part of the park has been put in. But there's a lot more. That's where the potential splash pad is going to be. There's gonna be lots of uh, planning to make that happen. One of the most recent ideas brought to me from a community member is seeing how we can get some pickleball courts. I understand that pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in our country. So we should have an outdoor pickleball court. So uh, we're seeing if we can't make that happen possibly. As y'all aware, there's uh, phase three of Wade Creek Park, uh, trying to raise money for that. Appreciate again the city staff going after the grants. We're trying to do some kind of grassroots fundraising. We had this idea of trying to use the art piece. That is going into the park as part of a fundraiser. And maybe that can still happen. It's kind of a bit of a challenge because the art commission is the one that actually. Picks the art piece. And so I don't know how we can all make that happen, but uh, we're, we're trying to do something where people actually. Design a tile and um, that goes somewhere in the park. We were thinking on the art piece that was going in there, but it may be somewhere else in the park. So a couple of things I'll just bring to your attention that maybe are a little bit of a concern. Um, the Faraday Hills Development, which is far north Estacada at the east end of Deuce Road. Um, that's starting to be built out there now. And I got a map of that. And it looks like there's not a park in there, but some green areas with trails. Which trails are actually part of our park master plan. So that's good. I guess. Um, the question I raise is how did that get to decision get made to not have a park? Because it would be the development that's the farthest away probably from any city park. And I would also raise that same concern for this, the housing development that's going in. Again, at the far north end of the city, at the other end of Deuce Road, where kind of Deuce Road and Eagle Creek Road come together. There's, as you well know, homes gonna go, go in there some. And as I understand to date. Uh, there's not a park plan for that whole area. I haven't heard that officially, but I've had some access to some of the, the preliminary drawings. And I guess I would ask, is that something that the council's aware of? Because again, it seems like there's a bunch of homes. And I also understand that you're trying to get some apartments in that area, which is good. I think they need a park in there. Um, so I'm not sure, sure uh, where that goes from there. Um, last comment I'm gonna make, I'm gonna switch hats here just a little bit. I'm also on the Chamber of Commerce Board. And um. We're trying to bring tourists into Estacada. I want to remind all the city councils that driving into Estacada needs to look beautiful. And if I can just say it frankly, sometimes our city entrance, while you have the nice sign up there. The sides of the roads and the center of the roads, if you go down there now, they look terrible. And I think we need to make that a high priority. I appreciate just today, the new parking lot, the grass around there finally got mowed. It was about a foot high and we got a lot of weeds going over there. I just want to encourage you guys to make that a priority. Because as we change the image of Estacada, it's gonna make us feel better about our community. And then also make everybody else think a little bit different about who we are as Estacada. So thank you again, you guys, for what you do. I appreciate you sitting in the hot seat. You do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent Doggill. That was a great cheerleading session for our city. I appreciate you and thank you very much. Were there any questions for Brent before we let him go? Uh, Jerry?
Not, not a question. Um, I just want to say that uh, it has been a absolute pleasure working with Parks and Recs Committee. Um, a group of people with uh, you know, like as Brent said, uh, outside-the-box thinking, uh, amazing energy. Um, that group of people hasn't, you know, yeah, if there's a project out there and they put their minds to it, they're going to get that project done. So. Um, it's a, it's a great commission, so.
Thank you, Jerry. Uh, anybody else? Uh, Joel?
Uh, Brent, you uh, you, you mentioned uh, the entrances into coming into the city. And you gave a good example with the uh, longer grass by the new parking lot. But can you, can you get a little more specifics on uh, you talking about? As far as this grass being mowed or trash or something that needs to be, you know, done further in your, in your eyes or your ideas?
Yeah, just the median down the center especially. Um, when the, that first went in a number of years ago, it looked really good. The plants were thriving. And it just seems like it's been a big lift to get the city to maintain that well. So if you drive down there now, there's a lot of weeds in there. And then on the sides of the roads, um, the shrubs that have been planted in there, a lot of them are now gone. And so it's just kind of bare dirt. I just think we can do better than that. And I realize, um, I realize that's an expense. I just think it's a good expense. Uh, I think if we make that whole drive into Estacada look good. It's just good for Estacada, so. Thank you.
I like it. Thank you. Uh, any other questions for Brent before I let him go? Not seeing, okay, thank you, Brent. We appreciate you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, um, we are moving on to the next one in the lineup.
Yeah, we have Kim here from the DEC.
All right.
Hi, everyone. Um, so I'm Kimberly Bruce. I'm the chair of the Downtown Estacada Commission. Um, the newly appointed DEC board has met six times since January. Um, two committees have been formed, um, and board members and community members have been assigned to each of those committees. So both the Promotions Committee and the Design and Economic Vitality Committee have met at least once. Um, a bulk of our board meetings have focused on training and getting the board up to speed with the Main Street program and approach. Um, along with discussions around the DEC's visions and priorities for 2021. Although those have been pretty loose, open discussions at this point. Um, priorities for this year have so far focused on events. Um, I'm really excited to share that we um, will be hosting the Fourth of July Parade again this summer. Uh, Connie Redman, along with the rest of the Promotions Committee, has been hard at work, um, making the appropriate arrangements to make that one happen. Um, note, there will be a new start time for the parade this year. Um, it's gonna start at 1:00 PM. Um, based on some previous year's requests from some churchgoers, to kind of make sure that they could get service in before attending the parade. Um, the theme for this year is gonna be dancing in the streets. Um, we felt that um, when it's safe to return to a somewhat normal routine after this pandemic. Um, that our community should really be having a big giant dance party in the streets. So hoping that people can play the music loud from the, the cars. And um, we can really celebrate getting back together in a safe, um, socially-distanced manner. Um, in our promotional materials for the parade, um, we do plan on mentioning that there's the concert in the park, um, that will follow right afterwards. Uh, we also are going to be talking with the downtown business owners and encouraging them to really keep their doors open. And be available for people both before and after the parade. Just really hoping to, to get people to stay either downtown or at Wade Creek Park. Uh, Estacada Uncorked, which was successful the last couple of years. We had to cancel it last year. Um, we are also canceling it for 2021, um, due to just the uncertain, certain COVID regulatory conditions. Um, and too short of a turnaround to really get the vendors and the sponsors that we need to make that event successful. Um, but definitely plan on having that back on the table for 2000, or um, back in the mix for 2022. We also anticipate that there will be an in-person Christmas tree lighting ceremony this year. Um, but we, um, as the board are exploring the possibility of expanding upon that event to be more inclusive. So not just a Christmas-centric event. Um, for example, looking at maybe um, opening up a vendor market beforehand. Um, to get people um, downtown and mingling um, before the actual Christmas tree lighting. We are also um, brainstorming a new shoulder season event to sort of take place in the fall or end of summer. Um, that's unique, um, that has the potential to draw both residents and visitors to downtown. Um, right now, a local company um, had come to Matt Lorenzen with um. The idea of hosting a soapbox derby uh, down Broadway Street. Um, so that's something, I mean, we think is different and unique and, and caters to the Estacada personality. And so right now, we're looking at the logistics of event like that to see if it's even possible. So. So the DEC hosted a joint planning session with the Chamber of Commerce in mid-April. Um, the conversation was meant to sort of build upon the 2016 branding work that has already been done. Um, but also um, was meant to just um, get the local tourism stakeholders, being the Chamber of Commerce and the DEC. Aligned and pulling in the same direction. So sort of everyone meeting everybody. We've got quite a few new people on the board for the DEC. Um, so together, we watched a training video on finding your unique selling position. Uh, and had a good conversation around what makes our area distinct. Um, the goal here is for the DEC to adopt a transformation strategy, um, sort of based on the Main Street approach. Um, after combining, sorry, after this combined group with the DEC and the Chamber. Um, have agreed on a unique selling position um, for, for the city. Uh, our next meeting, um, that takes place this week is gonna be solely focused on action planning. And narrow, narrowing down our vision for 2021 and the following years. Um, so there should be some more concrete kind of action steps that take place um, after that. Uh, I recently attended the virtual Main Street Now Conference on a scholarship. And I will say that there was a heavy, heavy emphasis on how the pandemic has permanently changed consumer behavior. Forever. Um, businesses now have to meet the people where they are. Because they can no longer count on people actually coming into their storefronts, even post-pandemic. So for businesses to be successful, the conference really emphasized that um, they must have an online presence. And these aren't just retailers. Um, these include hair salons and restaurants. So unfortunately, most businesses don't have an understanding of how to access this business online. And so we as city representatives and all the organizations that serve the city really have an opportunity to educate our businesses. Um, and support our businesses on how to get online. Um, so just sort of something for everyone to be thinking about. And with that said, again, we encourage you guys to invite all family and friends to join us at this year's Fourth of July Parade. Um, really think it's a great opportunity to wave that Estacada flag with pride. Thank you and really appreciate what all of you guys do for our city.
All right, thank you. Uh, do we have any questions for Kim? Let me see here. I'm not seeing any hands. All right, Kim, we appreciate your report and thank you very much.
Right, thank you. Right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next on the list?
We have Desiree from the Library Board.
Okay, Desiree, how are you? Oh, you're muted. Can you, uh, unmute?
Thank you for having me today.
Thank you for coming.
Be with you all. Yeah, absolutely. So I'm just gonna give, I'm just in for Connie Redman, who's the Library Board Chair. She wasn't able to make it tonight, so I'm the Library Director, Desiree Fleck. I'm gonna give an overview about January, February, and March for what the library's been doing. So in January, we, with COVID, we've been trying to open up more services for patrons and have as many available as possible with the different restrictions. So we started a holds pickup where people could come and they could place holds online and then come pick up their holds in the floor room and have a librarian check them out for them and then safely hand them their books. So we've been doing that and then also we started personalized book recommendations where you can go on the website. And, uh, one of the librarians will actually, uh, you fill out a form about your book preferences, what your, some of your favorite books are, some of your favorite authors, kind of like what, what hobbies you have. And then they send back this super detailed, amazing recommendation list of different books, which I did. And it was really great and I'm looking forward to reading all of those, uh, once I'm done with school. Um, the full-time staff and the library director also had diversity training, uh, in January. And then we also started offering the New York Times subscription for library cardholders, which is usually seventeen dollars a month. So that's available for free for all patrons. Uh, in February, we had City Councilor Strobel join us, which is really nice to get his perspective on things and have him there. Uh, we also, uh, I was really impressed with Library Director Michelle Kinnaman because she only, um, closed the library for two days during the ice storm and then was able to be there and available for patrons and the library staff to continue working and getting things done and making sure that there were services available for our patrons. Um, they also have been with COVID, um, one before COVID, one of the most popular events for library patrons is the small craft days and different craft things. So they've been working with, um, the librarians to make little craft kits that are COVID safe and that they could pick up from the library. And those are really popular. They did like a little plant in a terrarium kits and they handed out twenty-five of those until they ran out, they just ran out. And so, uh, they've been trying to make that more available and they've been partnering with, uh, Joanne Fabric's Creative Bug Service, which is a eight dollars a month subscription. And so they've been offering that for free for library patrons. And they have, uh, video tutorials and different craft things that people can do at their homes. And then also they're working on more crafts that they can hand out instead of having the big group craft days, just being able to hand out those items. Um, also, the Friends of the Library has been helping the Estacada Library do the Thousand Books Before Five Program, which is really geared toward, um, early literacy and helping lay that educational foundation for children and working with the Dolly Parton Library for Imagination Library for Children. So they've been very, that's been successful and they've been very excited about that. Um, for March, we did, uh, the mobile Wi-Fi hotspots are available for checkout and those have been really great. We've had them go out and come back in without any issues. And so people have been able to have more access to the internet and more services and things like that. Um, we also opened the library recently for limited browsing, so you can go in physically. Um, you can do self-service checkout for your holds. You don't have to wait for a librarian for that one. And then they have book bundles, like if you want, if you're coming with your kids and your kids like to look at a variety of books, they have like dogs, penguins, plants. And so they've got different book bundles ready and you can say, oh, I'd like to check out the dogs ones. They can grab that. And that's been popular with the parents and still being able to have some kind of library experience, even though we're not able to open up all the way yet. So really looking forward to, everyone's looking forward to being able to browse the stacks. But, um, also being very cautious and being very, um, careful for other people's benefit. Uh, also, we had the electrical, electric vehicle webinar, which was originally planned in 2020 to be a physical event with, um, Tesla in the library parking lot and everything like that. So people could come and talk to some experts about different electric vehicles. And we have the Tesla charging stations in the library parking lot now. So we're also, that was a webinar, but we are hoping to have that in the future as well as originally planned with the physical cars there and bring people in and, um, get more interest in that. Um, we did talk about the budget because of lost revenues from the floor room rentals and things like that. Revenues have been down, but, um, with Michelle Kinnaman being very budget conscious and very responsible with what funding we do have and being very careful. Um, we're actually still in the black and have a small reserve. And also the funding from the funding for the library in general is up because the census with more people moving in, the census said that there's more people. And then they say, oh, well, you have a higher service area with more people. You're going to be receiving a proportionately greater amount of funding. So that has also helped, um, to kind of bridge that gap between lost revenue and, um, still being able to provide services that people can use right now. Um, the other exciting thing, Brent mentioned the Wade Creek Park Phase Three. Um, we're also, um, the Director, Michelle Kinnaman, is collecting information for engraved bricks so that we can have, um, in the new amphitheater for a permanent, um, concert in the park. That little community building that's going to be out there that we can put, um, dedicated bricks around there. And so if you're, anybody is interested, you can, um, give your information to me, myself, or me, myself, or, uh, me or Michelle Kinnaman or anybody at the library. And we'll get that information to her because I think that's a really special thing that everybody likes around, um, Estacada. There's, it's always really nice to be able to go back and look at those and say, hey, that's, I did that in honor of somebody or, uh, our family just being here. And so we're really excited about that. So that's what we've been doing the last few months.
That's a lot. You should be proud. That's great. Uh, any questions for, uh, Desiree before we let her go? No? So we thank you for your presentation. It was very happy, very wonderful. I love it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and next on the list?
Um, Jean from the Arts Commission.
Okay, great. Jean, how are you?
Hey, I'm doing okay. I don't know if my video is working. I, I keep getting kicked off. So I apologize if there's any connection issues or if you can't hear me.
Well, that's all right. We can hear you just fine.
All right. Well, I will be a, a black void then that I will speak from if my, my image never appears. Uh, but hello, I'm Jean Hubert Larson. I am the current Chair of the Arts Commission. Um, thank you for inviting me to, uh, present tonight. Um, as you may know, nationwide, the arts, pandemic, especially the performing arts, and so much of that is dependent on, on gathering. So as a commission, we've really had to kind of shift gears on a, you know, weekly and monthly basis this year, trying to figure out what we can do. And I'm excited to say that, um, currently we have a full commission of active engaged commissioners and that we have really tried to focus this year on the maintenance and upkeep of public art as well as collaborations, future and present with other brainstorming, onboarding some of our new commissioners, um, and really talking about the art that we own as the city and, um, art that we can purchase in the future. And so, um, you know, we're, we're talking about, you know, the upkeep of the fountain in front of City Hall needs some repairs and what we're gonna do about that. Um, we worked toward repairing the walls in the library. If you don't know, before the pandemic, we did a, a quarterly art show, um, in the library that would be up for, uh, three months. Art would come to City Hall and post-pandemic, we hope to do that again. Um, and we have some lovely repainted walls in the library to hang art on. And we're also investigating a hanging system that will help protect those walls so that we're able to continue providing, um, public art shows, uh, to the public. Um, we have recently purchased, uh, a piece by Joe Cotter. Um, he's a local artist who passed away in, in 2012, who contributed to the murals and a lot of the art around town with a big presence. And so it's, it's really special that the city now is going to own one of his pieces. There aren't a ton of them out there for purchase now. And so that's, that's really exciting and we're looking forward to finding a good home for it in City Hall, um, once we're back open. Um, we, uh, have been talking to some of the other commissions about different collaborations that we can do. Kalika Stanton came from Parks and Rec to talk to us about the tiles and about the Wade Creek Park Phase Three, which is pretty exciting. Um, one of the things that we're trying to keep in mind is, uh, how we can support artists financially with some of the funding that we get for the public art. But also if we do a community art piece, how can we make that free and accessible to people? So those are some of the considerations as we're talking about some of these, uh, projects. Uh, we love the tile idea and we'll see if that, uh, moves forward or if there's another idea that comes forward. But we have some local artists that we are talking to about the coordination of that. Because anytime you're talking tiles, you're also talking a kiln and, you know, firing space and everything. But, um, I think that there's a lot of interest in some sort of, uh, community art piece. Um, and so we're really excited to see what, what comes out of that. Um, with the, with the Christmas tree lighting and historically, we've always had a winter artisan show that goes along with that. Uh, we haven't started discussing that yet, but Carl Hogan will probably connect with the D E C relatively soon about that. I'm glad to hear that the Christmas tree lighting is, uh, moving forward. That's a great, great fun event. Um, we're also putting together a newsletter. That's something that our, one of our new commissioners is spearheading. She's a local writer and, um, that's really exciting, thinking about our web presence and how we can communicate with the community. Um, and then the big thing that we usually do with the Arts Commission is talking about the summer celebration. Um, that's something that we usually start planning right after last year's summer celebration, so like August. Um, and this year, as you might know, has been a little uncertain. Um, and so, you know, when you're writing grants for these sorts of things, we have to be very specific about what we plan to do. Um, and since that hasn't really been possible to nail down an exact plan, we've been thinking about smaller activities that we can, um, kind of pack into July as a month so that we have a month's celebration of art and an art explosion in Estacada. Um, rather than, you know, a weekend's large gathering. And I think that will help us to be flexible, um, you know, based on whatever the restrictions look like at the time that we hit the summer. Um, but also allow us to, uh, share art with each other and really celebrate our community. Um, I'm excited to hear about the concerts in the park. I think that's great that that's happening in July as well. I'll add that to our list. Uh, we're coordinating with the library for a chalk walk, um, with their summer reading program. It just so happened they were planning on handing out.
Oh, did we lose her?
I think we did.
Oh, she was getting good there. Can we get her back?
I'll watch for her to pop back on and bring her back in.
Great, thank you. Um, do we have anybody in the lineup that can go while we're waiting?
You know, we don't have anybody else. The Planning Chair couldn't make it, so.
Oh, okay. All right. All right, so I guess we'll continue on and tell her, I'm sorry, we missed the rest of that. And hopefully we can catch that at a later date. Um, we are now, uh, at the City Managers Report. So Denise, I will let you take it away.
Yeah, I don't have anything tonight. I'm just getting back from vacation, trying to catch up on everything. And we did have a small, um, I and I project at U S Bank that, uh, happened this week. And they're gonna do the second paving lift and so that's complete and done. And, uh, we're just gonna be working on, uh, Wade Creek Park Phase Three, um, as soon as we get, uh, all the contracts in place.
Okay, great. That's perfect. And at this opportunity, I'm just gonna add something into the, uh, committee reports because my mayor thing isn't on here. But, uh, we had an incident happen this last week, uh, a bullying incident that happened up at the school. And I'm not gonna name kids or anything like that. They're dealing with that. But my concern is the bullying incident that happened itself. I think we have an issue that needs to be addressed. I think we cannot have this in our city. I think this is way outside the box. And I'd like to get with the school district, if possible, Denise, set up another joint meeting so we can sit down and talk about these issues while they're still fresh and, uh, maybe work on ways to prevent anything like this from happening again. Um, I don't know if any of the councillors would wish to speak on this at this point, but if not, I'm just gonna move on from there. Okay, great. Thank you, guys. Um, moving down. Oh, Joel, go ahead.
Just real quick, um, I got a chance after I heard about the incident and stuff to, uh, reach out and speak with, uh, the high school. Um, and to the, speak to the, uh, to the, uh, principal there. Um, I was very impressed about, uh, her. She got right on the phone, had a chat with me about it, was very responsive, um, about her, uh, about her, uh, concerns about it and wanting to work on trying to get that, you know, fixed because it happened over in Ranger Woods. Um, and then I spoke with the, tried to speak with the, the principal, uh, from the middle school. And, um, I did not get the same type of response from them. And, um, a little disappointed, um, that they didn't wanna be as responsive to, to speak, to, to speak to me, to try to figure out. I wanted to try to bring some information back to the council, um, today. But I, I couldn't get that because I still haven't had a chance to speak to the, to the principal from the high, from the, from the middle school yet. Um, and so I just, uh, I, I wanna put it out there that, you know, I think it's really important that, and as you'd mentioned, that the school district really needs to be responsive to, especially when something like this happens, to work with the city and to get the councillors and, and the whole city council moving together on that. And that when the council's trying to reach out and doesn't get much back from one of the schools, it's, it's pretty disappointing. So like, like I said, I'll, I'll, I just, that's all I can say, I guess. So, thanks.
Hey, thank you, Jill. Um, anybody else wish to come in on that before, oh, Charity, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I was kinda keeping an eye on it on Facebook, um, kinda came across my path. And it was just really, really upsetting to me. Um, I did reach out to the principals and, um, Superintendent Carpenter. He did get back to me. Um, I thought he was gonna be on tonight, but maybe communication was, got all mixed up or something. So, um, I'm hoping in the future that we can have somebody from either the superintendent or some of the principals on here with us and they can collaborate with some ideas of, um, of prevention, you know, um, just some things to throw out there. Kid, you know, I, I hate that I even have to like, figure out ideas for kids to be safe in our community. Like walking home with a buddy or something like that, you know? Um, so the whole reason we moved here was because it was such a, it, you know, I, I like to think it as a safe community and I, I, it was just really, really upsetting to me. So, um, this is a community issue. Um, so, um, we just really need to be work, looking out for each other and, and hopefully we can start collaborating with other community members. Um, maybe Denise, next meeting, we can set up a little segment or something for that and that would be really great.
Ryan thought our next meeting was the meeting he was scheduled to be at. He didn't realize there was one tonight. So he'll be at, he's scheduled already for the next meeting.
Perfect. Okay, he did, and he did get back to me. It's been miscommunication, so, awesome.
Well, it sounds like we got it addressed. So we appreciate that and thank you, Charity, and thank you, Joel, for your comments. Uh, we are now going to move forward on council business. We have the Housing Needs Analysis Contract Execution. And who's going to address that tonight? Is that, uh, Taylor?
Me, yep.
All right.
Yeah, so, um, as you all know, there've been a lot of discussions among the council and at the city in general about, um, housing issues, growth, housing need, um, and like affordability and the different types of housing options in the city. Um, and so, yeah, all of this has been happening as, as you also know, there's been all this growth and development, um, quite rapidly happening. Um, and so, as many of you have, I think, st-. And so, as many of you have, I think, stated, it's it's definitely important that we both try to act fast and kind of get ahead of that growth, but also that we're doing so with an understanding of what the issues are and what the needs are and you know, what are all of the options for tools and strategies that the city might have to address those needs. So um one really important and in fact state mandated tool that we have to do so is called the Housing Needs Analysis, so an H and A. Sometimes also called a Housing Capacity Analysis these days. Um, and so at the beginning of the year, we put out a request for proposals for an H and A accompanied by a housing strategy, which is kind of like um like an action plan, policy plan, um sort of a set of recommended options for policy and programmatic um actions that the city could choose to take to meet the identified need from the, you know, the need that was identified by the analysis. And then that, that strategy piece also being informed by kind of the preferences um and input from the public involvement. So um yeah, so we put out that R F P, I think at the end of January, and the highest scoring proposal was from Angelo Planning Group and um they partner with Johnson Economics. Um, and so part of what made them the preferred consultant was the really in-depth community engagement that they proposed that will help inform that um, the development of the housing strategy piece. And so, and that's part of what we were looking for when we put out the R F P because of how long it's been since the the only full Housing Needs Analysis that the city has had, which as we've mentioned before, was from nineteen seventy nine. And then we've also had the more recent, like, kind of preliminary H and A findings that we did get from participating in the county Housing Needs Analysis in twenty nineteen, but that really didn't involve very robust if any um local public involvement or, you know, yeah, inquiry about what what the local community of Estacada wants and needs, so. So that's something that we were looking for there. And they, they really proposed that in depth, and so um the packet includes a letter from the project manager from Angelo Planning Group, Matt Hasty, just describing the basics of the project. And then the contract provisions, which are very standard language for this type of project, which Angelo has done dozens of Housing Needs Analyses across the state. Um, and then the scope of work that we agreed upon with them, which is um very much reflective. I don't think there were any substantial changes at all, in fact, from um what the R F P requested and what they proposed. So, I think at this point, the request from staff is for the council to direct the city manager to sign the contract and get the project started. So, yeah, if there's questions, I will try to answer them.
Okay, Joel, looky.
So, uh, I got a question. You said that there is a multiple multiple people to put in for the bid, correct?
Yeah.
Right, with such a, such a substantial price tag, I I would be really curious to see the other ones that were put forward, so that we, as a council, have a chance to kind of review and understand what we're, what that, we're looking at as a comparison there. Because it's just such a high price that we, I really would like to know and feel like I did my due diligence before I put a vote to it myself.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Katie?
I think everyone knows I'm really excited about an H and A being done in our city. But I was just gonna speak to what councillor like he was saying, which is exactly the same thing um that in in the future, I brought it up a couple of times, that even if you're putting before us one bid saying, we like this bid, go with this bid. I think it's still a really good idea to have the other bids that we received published, so that we could at least look at those as we make the decision and we would probably end up agreeing with you, but I do think that it would behoove us as a city at least for the transparency and accountability that we um owe to our constituents, to have all of the bids that we received published, is how I feel, so. Yeah.
And we can bring that back at the next thing. Um, I will tell you that we only got one other a response and it was incomplete. But we can bring that back to you, so you can see and we can outline the places that this one did address and the other one didn't address.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll make a mental note also to, I mean, we could have included that, the, both of them in the packet. Um, they're kinda long, but uh, yeah, might as well. The packet's long anyway, so.
And I had one more question, Taylor, before we move on on that.
Sure.
I know at one time during C four, uh, the county was opting to do a joint analysis where they were gonna pay a percentage. We would pay a percentage to run an analysis, a Housing Needs Analysis. Is the county out of this now? Or are they not being a part of this? Or what has happened with that? This was a while back, before you, Katie.
Yeah, we already received their housing that we went in with them on before, I think, months ago.
Was that the twenty nineteen?
Yeah.
That was probably, I would imagine, so Clackamas County did a a regional Housing Needs Analysis, which is um actually, I think, I think Clackamas County was um using sort of, I don't, I don't know what the state's calling it, but like they're sort of testing out a, a new methodology for doing a regional analysis instead of a local you know, citywide analysis. And so, I, I think that, yeah, part of part of that and what we got out of that was um that they were uh allowing cities to opt in and it sounds like we would only, we only had to pay a smaller a smaller portion than what we maybe normally would have had to pay for a full Housing Needs Analysis. And what you get is a baseline kind of preliminary set of findings that gives you a kind of high-level snapshot of the housing need. But that the, the analysis there is not as in-depth as what you get in the uh, from the H and A methodology that the state requires for a local Housing Needs Analysis.
And Mayor, those, that, that study back, that we received back in two thousand nineteen was what we used to adopt the changes in our um ordinances for those zone changes. We use that for that. And we use that for the basis of this. So yes, we did receive that um in two thousand nineteen.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. All right, well, we're gonna bring it back and we'll see uh both bids on this and uh if anything else comes, you know, uh, I know there's a, a date that this is supposed to be in by, but if we get any other people chiming in. Cause like you said, this is a big ticket item to the, to the budget line and we wanna make sure we're very uh prudent on who we pick, so. Uh, Katie, go ahead.
Uh, with, with all due respect, I think that we should hold a vote to see if we can just get it through today. It sounds like the other bid that they received was incomplete. And that being said, it looks like based on their timeline, their kickoff meeting that they'd like to have is around May fifteenth. I really think that we should do this sooner rather than later, um especially with how rapid the growth is happening. I'd like to have this start. If it's okay, Mayor, I'd like to have a vote to, I'd like to make a motion to approve this bid.
Well, I don't know about that. I'm, I'm more into waiting until we see the other even unfinished proposal. Uh, like I said, it's a big ticket item. I want the people to know what we're doing and how we're doing it. And complete and utter openness is what this is really all about, so.
So was that a, was that a motion, Katie?
No, it's not a motion, because we're not there yet. But we can call a motion. You wanna call a motion?
I'd like to call the motion. I'd like to uh call the motion to approve uh this, this bid for the Housing Needs Analysis.
And I'll second it.
Okay, you got a first and second. Uh, let's do a roll call on this, please.
Okay. Councilor Dunsborough?
Yes.
Councilor Gates?
I'm okay with waiting, so I'll just say no.
Councilor Hughes?
No.
Councilor Liddkey?
No.
Councilor Strobel?
No.
Councilor Ten Bush?
Yes.
Mayor Drinkling?
No, thank you.
Motion field.
All right, so we will wait until the next meeting for that. Next on the list, we have ordinance twenty twenty one zero zero four, an ordinance approving a zone change and amending the comprehensive plan map and zoning.
And that's also me.
That's you, Dave.
Um, so in, let's see, I'm scrolling down here in the packet. The council approved a request for a zone change from um light industrial to outdoor commercial in, it looks like, December of last year. And so um whenever there's a change to the, the comprehensive plan map, we will notice the state about that proposed change and then we will also update um the state whenever the council issues a final decision. And so uh actually, none of, none of us staff realized at the time that a um, a resolution or an ordinance was required at the end of that change, so um, that's why this is coming, what is it, uh, five months late or something? So this is uh just an administrative um process of finalizing that zone change that was approved uh by you all in December, or by most of you.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. So uh, I will take a motion on this. Do I have a motion on the floor?
I move to approve ordinance series of two thousand twenty one number zero zero four.
Second. Okay, I have a first and second. All those in paper say aye.
Aye, aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Taylor. Okay, next I have a sidewalk variance request, uh one seventeen Northwest Sixth Avenue. Is that you, Taylor, as well?
Uh, yeah, kind of, so.
If you want me to, Taylor.
Sure.
I'll start it. So um, he, the, he is asking for an or uh variance on Broadway Street. Is everyone familiar where he's at? He's right across the, he's the big house that just put, uh, had an addition on it.
Yeah.
And Broadway Street on that side of the street is not um we used, we put a larger sidewalk on the other side of the road because of the way the corner was at and the creek went across Broadway, so um, we are not looking at anyone to have to build a sidewalk on his side of the street on Broadway. So staff is recommending that request. On um on Sixth, at this time, we don't have the engineering and the the information he needs to do a sidewalk on Sixth, but we don't wanna do that wave yet because we do see sidewalks eventually on that side of Sixth Street. And so we have a thing that we do with people when there isn't engineering and isn't growth right there where other people are developing their sidewalks or whatever it should be. Until um, until that time, we'd have a delays, delayed site improvement that we have them sign that says at such time, if it does ever come, that sidewalks are required there, then they would be required to put that on. And that's what we are staff is recommending for the Sixth Street sidewalk, that he doesn't have to build it now and that we would enter into a delayed site agreement.
Okay, all right. Uh, is council feel comfortable? Joel, go ahead.
But just to, maybe I misunderstood what you're saying. Why specifically are we delaying uh to not build a sidewalk there on that side?
Don't have the engineering available for the sidewalks there because of the creek and the way the street is. But we do see that um, uh, when there's a big corner piece of property that's undeveloped on that side, at that time, that's when we feel like there'll be engineering available and then we would go ahead and make everyone along there connect and build, build their sidewalks.
Okay, I think, I, I think I was confused on where this was at. Nevermind, I, I understand better now. Okay.
Okay, we're, we're talking about right along the creek there.
Yeah, yeah, I, I missed the Northwest Eighth. I just thought it was right there in Sixth, that area. That makes better sense. Okay.
And he, he would still be liable to put the sidewalk in at the time that we encompassed. I think that's fair enough. Um, does everybody feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, sorry, one last question. How, how far out would it be? Would like, when would he have to build it?
We, we have no idea on a timeline, but assume, when he would have a certain amount of time after he's notified that it's time to do that, but I, I can't tell you when that corner will develop.
Okay, so it'd be within certain period of time after the corner's developed, he has to do it.
Yes, yep.
All right, I got you. I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, all right. Is this something we need to vote on or consensus?
Yeah, but did we, is um, is he here, Sadie?
Yeah, he's here. I can bring him in.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Oops, let's see.
Michael, how are you, sir? I think he's muted still there.
I don't know if you can see me.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yay, great. Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you, sir.
Yay, yeah.
Your house looks beautiful. You did a great job on it.
I hope you're all are happy with it.
Oh, yeah, it looks beautiful. I'm very happy.
So happy. Yeah, we've been working on it. Yeah, I'm super happy with um what Denise had said earlier. I talked earlier with Margaret as well about the, about the delay, delayed improvement on the, the sidewalk. And yeah, we're, there's just a lot that needs to be answered before we can do that um with the creek, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we agree totally and we appreciate you bringing it to us because that's something we're gonna deal with in the future. I'm sure we like it to have it built right away, but we wanna make sure we do it right, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, so if there's nothing else to add, we'll go ahead and uh, do you want us to vote on this, Denise, or? Okay, we'll vote on this. Can I have a um, a motion on the floor?
Uh, yeah, I think uh, I, I moved to approve the request for a sidewalk variance at one one seven Northwest Sixth Avenue on Northwest Broadway Street with the understanding that two driveways will be constructed according to the city standards to serve the primary home and A D U and that a delayed site improvement agreement will be allowed for the side arc required on Northwest Sixth Avenue.
Okay, thank you, Joel. I have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, first and second. All those in papers say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. We appreciate you, sir. Thank you for coming forward.
We'll be in touch more. Thanks so much.
All right, thank you. All right, we are at uh twenty twenty one council goals. Who would that be? Would that be Denise?
Okay, I took all the notes and all the minutes and took two or three different people's notes and I, hopefully I caught everything that um was said at the session for that, so if, I hope you had time to look through it and if you have any additions, corrections, amendments, um I'd be happy to, to put those in there.
Okay, great.
To do, it's probably not gonna all happen because there's so much stuff there, but it's always nice to have it there. So if an opportunity comes and one of these things can get done, it, it's there ready for us to do.
Good, good. Yeah, it was done well. Uh, has anybody, everybody had a chance to look at it? Is there anything there that you could see that's an issue that we need to address or change or do anything? No, everybody's good?
Yeah, I've got some quick questions. So uh, the, this is under improved community assets. Begin the master planning of Campanella Park. So, I'm, I guess I'm, I'm really confused. I was under the impression that Campanella, as the developer, was going to be developing the majority of that park and I guess I, I would like to talk with you maybe about how involved the city is going to actually be in that.
The developer is done with all the improvements that they were required to do. For the one property now.
Okay.
So, uh, we, we had, the intentions all along has been to do a master planning, just like we did for Wade Creek Park. For what are we gonna do with, cause it is eight acres and there is a small portion that has been um completed, but there's a lot more that we need to master plan and we know one of the things that is gonna happen there is a spray park. But that still leaves a lot of room for the other things. But that still leaves a lot of room for the other things such as a, a ball wall or, or a dog park or a inclusive park. There's a whole bunch of stuff that can be added in. So we're going to go through the community process of doing a master plan where we have, uh, the Parks and Rec lead committees and have town halls and all that. Hopefully that people can go to in person and let us know what they want to see there.
Yeah, I guess I'm just only a little confused because I was under the impression that they received reduced SDC fees, um, especially in terms of the parks and recreation SDCs in exchange for them actually contributing greatly to the, the, the construction of the park.
Yeah, they did get SDCs for the cost of the land and the part of the park that they built. So they did get some SDC deferrals on that, credits on that, not deferrals.
I guess I just want a little bit more clarification. I'll reach out to you privately, Denise.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions to that? No? Okay. Thank you. Oh, Paul, go ahead.
Uh, quick question. Under the pedestrian bicycle safety and connectivity, I didn't remember this part, the, the paint, is it Sharo sign?
Yes.
What was that?
Okay. So when you are, and our active transportation plan, there's, um, streets that are already developed in the city where Sharos are, mean it's shared with bikes and, and pedestrians and traffic, bikes and traffic. And so, um, some of the areas, the plan had seven routes and some of those routes have areas where there's going to be the shared, which is Sharos. And we want to get those painted on those areas. One is, for example, is on Wade Street that goes by the mill property and past the Assembly of God Church. That's a good example of a street that there's never going to be bike lanes. They're just going to be a shared lane. And so we would paint those, those bikes, shared stencils on the pavement. So cars know to look for bikes on that area.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions to that? Joel, go ahead.
Just a quick clarification on one of the short-term planning, um, PC I have on here. It says assembled charter review for committee to look at mayor over term limits. Um, the, I think our conversation was to try to get that onto a, um, get that onto a ballot.
Yeah, we're going to get it on the November ballot.
Yeah, I just, that is, that is worded differently from what I, from, from what I am understanding it as. So.
This is just, you typically defer any kind of charter change. You have a charter review committee, look at it and then send it and then, but it's, it is going to be for the November election.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, anybody else? All right. Thank you, Denise. We appreciate that. And we're moving on to, uh, quarterly financial reports.
And I'm muted here. Let me get to that.
Denise, do you want a, a vote or consensus on adopting those goals?
Yeah, it just, we do need a council consensus on that, that those are, you're going to be your goals this year.
All right. Everybody's happy with that. We're getting consensus. All right. We got thumbs up on everybody.
Okay, cool. Good. Okay, on the, um, on the, um, financial report, um, we're finally getting some revenues in such as our taxes. It always makes it look kind of bare until November. I highlighted the areas that, um, seemed either really low or really high for some reason and tried to explain those. And with all the reserve funds, um, SDCs are coming in um, a lot more than expected, which we say this every year. We always, we try to plan for more, but we don't want to really plan for too many more. So it seems like we're always a little less than what's coming in. So those are high. Um, planning fees are high because those are coming in with the building permits and building permits or fees are high. Um, you will be seeing a, a couple of supplemental budgets to account for some of these um, that are high. We have to do supplemental budgets. On the reserve funds, we normally don't have to do them because we aren't spending the money. So if you don't spend the money, you don't, you can get more revenues. You just can't spend them. But on the building side, we usually have to spend that seventy-five percent to pay for those. So you'll see a supplemental budget on that. But I welcome any questions. If anyone has questions on any of these numbers, I can hopefully answer them or, or Sadie can help me.
Yep. Paul, go ahead.
Um, I, I don't know if it's necessarily on these numbers, but with some of the stimulus, uh, that was passed recently, like the, the one in March, um, some of that's going to funnel down to states and counties, local governments. Do we know what? If anything's coming?
Yes, the, the one that just passed, um, we're going to actually get, well, if it'll be close to this amount, it's not final, but we are, we should see about seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars with the last one. We get half of it in this year and then half of it next year. And, um, the county gets the money and then they have, no, let's see here. I think the county will get our money because you only get the money directly if you have more than fifty thousand people. And then they will give us our part of that. And, uh, it's of course used for, for, uh, there's a list of things you can use it for and one of it is infrastructure. So, um, at least this first half, we will probably use on our high-level reservoir. Um, we were awarded two hundred and twenty thousand from the state in their process for, um, the pump station that we need to pump the water up to the high-level reservoir. So that was good because now we, that covers our, the whole cost of the project for us. So, um, without asking for any of this, we're really, uh, fortunate because it's really paying for a lot of things that we desperately need here. So.
Great, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Any more questions there? Not seeing any. So thank you, Denise, for that. I appreciate it. Okay. We are on the second consideration for ordinance twenty twenty one zero zero three in ordinance of the city of Estacada adding chapters fifteen point two five erosion control to the Estacada municipal code. Now, this is our, what, second reading on this or third? Second reading? Okay. Can I have a motion for that, please?
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero zero three.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Okay. I have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for that. Okay. Moving right along. We are at citizen and community group comment the second time around. Anybody in the hall?
I don't see anybody with their hand raised. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak, can you use the raised hand function? Nope.
See anybody? No? Okay, great. All right. Um, we are now at mayor and council reports and comments. So I will start with you, Joel.
Uh, no, nothing, nothing major. Uh, been a busy day. Had some good meetings and, and stuff and some good, good chats. But, um, yeah, it's been, it's been a good day. Um, thanks everybody for, for coming out and, and working hard for the city. And yeah, that's it.
Good. Thank you. Uh, Charity?
Yeah, I just want to thank, um, all of the, uh, the committees that came out this evening to have, um, to give us updates. That was really informative. Um, also want to thank staff for putting together the packet, um, especially the goals, Denise. Appreciate that. That's quite a bit. Um, so just thank everybody for coming out tonight, like Joel had said, and, um, I, I am wishing everybody a good next couple of weeks.
Hey, thank you. Katie?
Um, I don't know how many counselors have had an opportunity to review the video of the policy session between the board of county commissioners last week and, um, our own economic development manager from the city of Estacada, Matt Lorenzen. I, I do want to express how appalled I am at the way that he was treated by the chair of the county commissioners. Um, I felt that the chair was rather disrespectful, uh, at one point named called, uh, our staff member, our, our city staff. But, uh, ultimately she spent a lot of time asking about where the counselors were, why were the counselors there? I do want to remind at this moment, the chair of county commissioners, but, uh, everyone, I want to remind everyone that every single person that you see here on the screen is a volunteer who have lives and jobs and families and don't have the luxury of being able to take time out of work at ten o'clock on a Tuesday to, uh, to go and present in front of the board of county commissioners. Um, when we as city counselors reach out to other elected officials who are, um, serving in, in this, in similar capacities that we are, but have the luxury of being paid to do it. Um, we still, we still deserve respect when we reach out to those people, even if our position doesn't come with a paycheck. Um, I have personally tried to reach out to the board of county commissioners chair, uh, Chair T D Smith and was treated with a similar level of disrespect that she showed our city staff member. And I just want to express that no matter who you are, um, if you want to reach out to us, we are accessible, but, uh, we are also volunteers. Please keep that in mind. Um, and, and try to really treat everyone with respect, even if our position doesn't come with a paycheck. So I just wanted to express my sincere disappointment in the way that the, that the chair of the county commissioners for Clackamas County was not only treating city staff members, but also referring to us in our positions and the way that she has treated me in the past as well. So I just wanted to make that a matter of this record. And I think everybody, especially city staffs or everything that you do, you put up with a lot, you really, really do. And you really shouldn't have to, um, put up with the way that some people treat you. And I apologize if I have ever been in one of those positions or if I've ever been one of those people, but, uh, we can all do better. I just wanted to say that.
Yeah. Thank you, Katie. Jerry?
That was great. Um, I appreciate that, Katie. Um, that was, uh, I'm going to have to watch that video because I, I haven't watched it. So, um, thank you, city staff. Thank you, counselors. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, uh, um, another great meeting. So thank you guys all.
Thank you, Jerry. Uh, Justin?
Yeah, uh, I just wanted to thank everybody too, but also just to hit on our school district. I am extremely proud of our school district. I have had the opportunity to sit down with just about every principal and they are, they are actually very responsive. And they do care very much about our students. I can tell you that firsthand, the safety and everything about our students. So I just want to make it clear that every single one of those principals care about their kids and all kids in our district. So I just wanted to throw that out there. So thanks, guys.
Thank you. Uh, Paul?
Uh, nothing really further. Appreciate the efforts of the staff and all of our volunteers to, that contributed tonight as well. So thanks for that.
Thank you, Paul. And normally I would squeak in a comment, but I'm going to use this time to go over two more things that we didn't have on the agenda. I met with CCSO today going over just general things. And one thing that came to mind that I think is going to be a concern to all of us and we should really be starting to talk about is how to increase our service with our city growing at the rate it's growing and as fast as it is. We're not having the conversation of services by CCSO that we should be having. Uh, it's come to a time where we're going to have to consider more hours in a day to watch our city. I mean, crime rates going up. People are moving in. We're talking about putting housing in. We're talking about doing all this, but we're not thinking of the bigger picture. And that is that we have services to protect everyone. So I would hope that we would have that conversation soon. Maybe we can put that on a future agenda if possible and get a representative, maybe even the sheriff herself out here to have this conversation with us. Um, and the other thing I had on here, and this is just a little comedy skit here. I, I, I love the new food carts. I, I had the pleasure of enjoying them. They had a pulled pork sandwich in the barbecue area that was just incredible. But I noticed one thing. We're not looking at the seating there in between the carts and that really needs to be addressed because it's really hard to eat a pulled pork sandwich with stuff dripping off of it in the middle of nowhere to sit. So maybe we could consider, uh, a seating arrangement in there somewhere or find a way to make that work. So there's place to sit since we have four carts there and an open area in between. I don't know if that's a possibility. I don't know if we're having that conversation.
So, um, if they, if they have seating, then they have to have restroom facilities.
Oh, okay.
Why most of them don't have seating.
And we have to make sure also that the parking, the required off-street parking that exists in that lot for the primary use.
Yeah.
Will still be sufficient to meet, to meet the code. But I like where you're going with that.
Okay. All right. Uh, Joel, do you got something to add there? I see your hand.
Uh, yeah, I did actually talk to one of the food carts when I was down there getting food the other day. They, they have, uh, something that they've been working on. It's, I think that their initial, uh, take back where that's kind of slowed them down was the, uh, high review cost of the plans. That's what they kept talking about was the like nine hundred and eighty bucks to submit it. They were told to review the plans or to, to inquire about it or something. So maybe some clarification with them. Um, would be good because they, they originally thought it was nine hundred and eighty dollars just to ask a question about it. So I, I might be something the city can reach out to them and give some clarification of what those costs and policies and how we'd go about doing that. Cause it's, I think they're, one of the big things is confusion down there.
Yeah. If you want to send me their contact info, I'd be happy to clarify that.
Uh, yeah, I just was having to talk to them. I'll have to go down and ask them again. So.
Sure.
Good. I did, I did tell them to reach out though.
Yeah. Thank you. And thank you, Taylor, for chiming in there. I appreciate that. Um, and again, thank you, everyone in the city for everything that you do. You guys work really hard and you go through a lot. And I talked with Matt about that incident that happened at the county. I was not happy with that. Um, but I'm glad Katie, you brought it up and brought it forward. So thank you. Uh, in that, I appreciate every one of you for the time that you spend here every week, every other week, uh, making decisions for your city and your citizens. Appreciate you too. So thank you and have a wonderful night and we'll see you next time.